Okay, that's good.
Can you hear me? It's Linda.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we can hear you in the audience. So those are the panelists that were talking only, right? The panelists can only talk.
Yes.
Okay, just going to do one more final check on mic. Bob will work, go.
All right.
They want to go, they can go. But I say that.
No, not yet.
Do you need the mics on or do you want us to turn them off?
There's a, so on the mics, there's a mute button on the back. So.
I can't. Mr. Agiar, if you could mute your computer.
Did he do it? Can you right-click and mute it?
No.
Mr. Agiar, can you, could you possibly mute your computer? Just, yeah. Just to be safe, so no, no back, backfeed. Thank you. Can you mute? It's still connecting. All right, now it doesn't have audio. Good. All right, should be fine. We should be fine, yeah. It's just not connected to audio right now. Oh, there you go. Takes a pill. Yep. Good, great. Welcome, everyone, to our June 9th budget hearing. We are, we are live. Folks here, and then it's, we're broadcasting. Here with me. Before we begin. In the event of emergency, the two crews are behind you. Please, we want to decide here. Decide here. Exit out of the building. New gym.
Walk into the mic, please.
We will meet at the new gym. And wait for the construction. Those of you at home, you're safe. In this is an emergency. Okay, before we begin, those of you at home. If you are on Zoom, you have the raise your hand icon to indicate if it's a question. If you're on your phone, star nine will allow you to communicate if you have a question. Star six will allow you to mute on mute your phone. I ask anybody that's going to speak tonight, whether you're here or calling in, to please state your name and address for the town clerk. And with that, we will begin. First, we'll stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for a minute and certainly. Okay. For those of you keeping a close look at town council and school committee here tonight, as well as participating on the line.
Ms. Lujia Pusa?
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Yeah.
Mr. Buttermeyer? Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Agiar?
Here.
And Mike Buttermeyer is not. He is a. Hopefully, we wish them a very exciting event from my. We will begin, before we begin with the budget process, I just want to let everyone up to speed. This process began back in early March when the town administrator submitted the budget. We provided budget reviews from the week of April 26th, April 27th, April 28th. We've got our budget reviews meant to each of the revenues and expenditures department by department. Traditionally approved the budget on May 10th. And so tonight, we will be doing a review of the budget. And this is a public hearing. The town administrators, some questions, comments. With that.
Ms. Nate?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, chairman, school committee, ladies and gentlemen, and people participating at home. As the president just said, the town budget was presented to the council at meetings on April 26th, 27th, and 28th. Proposed changes were made, and a motion to adopt the provisional budget was passed on May 10th. We are here tonight to review the town council's provisional budget. Following tonight, the final budget is scheduled to be adopted at the June 28th council meeting. So let's start on page seven of the budget. Here you will find the letter that I wrote to the council, which was sent to the council at the end of March. The letter was revised to reflect changes made during and since our budget hearings. The provisional budget details $69,74,575 in expenditures from the general fund, which is 3.07%, which is a 3.07, I'm sorry, 3.7% increase over last year. This increase includes the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant money, which was received by the town for the purpose of augmenting our firefighting force. The increase in expenditures is actually 2.62% without the safer grant. The annual inflation rate for the United States is 4.2% for the 12 months ended April 2021. This proposal will entail a property tax rate of $15.31 per $1,000 in assessed value compared to the current rate of $15.73. This is a 23.7 cent or 1.573% increase in the property tax rate. So if we scroll now to the top of page nine, please. At the top of page nine, you can see the total property levy is $57,747,442. The total property levy is determined by adding the residential, commercial, intangible property levels. This is a 2.85% increase over last year and is about $644,000 below the cap, which is the limit to which the levy can be raised. The levy on motor vehicles is not factored in when determining the levy cap. Total revenues and expenditures are highlighted at the bottom of the respective sections on this page. For information purposes, there is a detailed breakout of each of these levels on pages 16 and 17 of the provisional budget. But for now, we'll start with revenues and scroll to page 10, please. So on page 10, starting at the top of the page and continuing to page 11, we can see projected revenues from specific sources. We project revenue from property taxes, state aid, general government operations, public safety operations, the Prudence Island Transfer Station, rental income, Glen Manor House operations, and grants. Mr. President, the total found at the bottom of page 11 for all revenues is projected to be $69,74,575. Now if we move to expenditures and scroll to the top of page 32, please. The first section on page 32 breaks out total expenditures for general government. For our purposes, general government is essentially made up of all the functions and operations located in town hall. This was provisionally approved at $6,077,138. Next is public safety, which includes police and fire operations. This has been provisionally approved at $15,688,790. On the next page. You'll see public works, which includes road paving, snow removal, and the Prudence Island Transfer Station. That was provisionally approved at $4,202,79. This is followed by recreation and parks, which was provisionally approved at $337,805. So, Mr. President, we have a municipal government subtotal of $26,305,811. If we go to the top of page 34. We see civic support. It should be noted that civic support includes state library aid, which is a pass through from the town to the Horstens Free Library. Total civic support was provisionally approved at $1,058,252. Following civic supports. On the next page. We have debt service. Debt service was provisionally approved at $2,103,151. For information purposes, there is a complete breakout of town and school debt that begins on page 86 of the budget for those interested. Now, at the middle of this page, you can see a section labeled other items. It should be noted that capital projects and expenditures will be funded to appropriate department budgets in the fiscal year 2020 surplus, as approved during the previous budget meetings. Next year's anticipated capital projects and expenditures are broken out on pages 82 and 85 for those interested. This section also includes funds to be distributed to the other post-deployment benefit account. Interest on the septic loan bond, an open space revert, an open space reserve fund, a capital reserve fund, and a contingency account. The total for other items was provisionally approved at $439,974. We go to the next, I'm sorry, then we reach the end of the municipal side of the budget. So, Mr. President, the sum of these subsections equals the total municipal budget, which was provisionally approved at $29,907,188. The school budget is summarized on page 36. We just scroll up a little bit. Miss the school. Okay. So here we see a summary of the school budget. The total town and state funding was provisionally approved at $39,167,388. Now, the school department also receives other funding, particularly federal funding. So let's turn to page 81, where we can see their budget more clearly. The school budget is a sum of various parts, which consists of direct town appropriations and several other sources of revenue. Beginning at the top of the page, you can see we project federal impact aid at $180,000. Next, we project state aid to be $3,802,70. Following that, we have restricted revenue projected to be $1,913,125. If we go to the next page. You can see miscellaneous revenue is projected to be $1,794,832, which is a sum of anticipated receipts, profit shares, tuition payments, and Medicaid reimbursement. Direct funding from the town general fund includes a local appropriation of $35,367,181. So the total unrestricted and restricted school budget is a sum of these sections and was provisionally approved at $43,553,55. So if we now return back to page 36. We can see the total budget sums, the total expenditure budget sums to $69,74,575, which is equal to the revenues and which also was provisionally approved by the council at the previous budget hearing on May 10th, the budget meeting on May 10th. Now, if we turn to page 97. The last budgets, the last budget sections to review are the enterprise funds, and they begin here on page 97. The first one is the Glen Farm Equestrian Center. By contract, the concessionaire in charge of the center shall pay the town an annual base fee of $18,000 plus 5% of their annual gross receipts. An amount not to exceed the first $5,000 of revenue share generated is credited back to the concessionaire to be invested in repairs, renovation, and long-term maintenance of the state. This is monitored through a regular review of the center's financial statements by the Director of Economic Development. The projected revenue minus operations costs will net the fund a projected surplus of $8,000. Go to the next page. You see the next enterprise fund, which is the Headley Street Transfer Station. The Headley Street Transfer Station budget operates on a calendar year, not the fiscal year. So they operate from January 1st to December 31st, and that budget was previously approved at the November 23rd beginning of last year. There is a projected fund surplus of $16,646 in that enterprise fund. If we go to the next page. We'll see the Glen Manor House operation. The Glen Manor House authority is the authority which is in charge of Glen Manor House, and they project $575,000 in revenue and $239,945 in total expenses, resulting in a net surplus of $239,945. So if you go to the next page. The way that fund operates, 25% of that surplus, which is $59,986, gets distributed to their capital fund. 75% of that surplus, which is $179,958, gets turned back, is projected, and will get turned back over to the town general fund. If we turn to page 101, the next page. We have the septic loan program. This is a program administered for the town by the Rhode Island Housing Authority. The town borrows funds at low cost and then relends these funds in the form of low-interest loans to those that may not meet the requirements of the system program or the community system loan program. We project $4,000 in program service fees and $45,825 to be transferred from the general fund for a total of $49,825 in revenue. We project $6,424 in program and interest expenses, leaving $43,401 available for this program. And then lastly, on page 102. We have the Arthur Daniel Howe House, which some may know as the Felt House. In accordance with the concessionaire's agreement, the vendors are obligated to remit 35, correction, $30,450 base fee to the town. Also, as part of the agreement, the base fee is credited right back to the vendor for continued renovations to the building. There is no surplus or deficit projected for this next fiscal year. So, Mr. President, that ends the review of the budget. My review of the budget. And as I said in my opening statement, the provisional budget will be presented to the council within changes that are made tonight at the 28th town council agenda for final budget.
And it's ready. Thank you. And all the departments that helped throughout the budget process. Again, this is something that takes months to get to where we are. And again. If I introduce. I mean, we do have a, you know, we do have a steady increase in the tax rate. That's necessary. At this point, I will. Questions or comments?
Mr. President, if you don't mind, it's very hard to hear you if you wouldn't mind speaking a little closer to the microphone, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
A little closer. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the common, to the public comment. Again, if you're going to speak tonight, please step up to the microphone in front of the auditorium here and again, state your name and address for the town clerk and then proceed. Mr. Fitzmaurice?
Thank you, Mr. Agiar. My name is Larry Fitzmaurice, 15 Kristen Court of Enforcement. Mr. President and members of the council, we're going to speak rather narrowly to the budgets. We spoke to them in the past budget hearings. Meetings regarding the pension, we're going to do that again tonight. Part of the problem with pensions, if anyone is paying attention to other communities in the state, is the fastest road to financial ruin is to not manage your budget, not manage your pensions directly. Not saying that we're going down the drain tomorrow, but we have a very disturbing trend, and that's what I want to address. Of course, this pension plan is funded at currently the last audited look at it, which is 2020 product at 49.5%. This is substantially below the 60% required by the state. And as a consequence, we are considered in critical status. We've been in critical status for some time. Since that standard was established in state law, we've been two or three times very close to the number. So I don't want to give you the impression that we've really been bad on this, but we are bad now. And our problem is here that this number, this percentage of the funding of the pension plan is declining rather rapidly, while at the same time, costs are rising. Funding the plan, the amount of funding the town is budgeting for the pension plan is increasing dramatically in fiscal year 20. We increased over the previous year the funding at $160,000, which is a 3.7% increase. In the current year, which is fiscal year 21, we increased it 434,000 change, which works out to about 9.7% increase. For the budget that will begin July 1st, and that goes next month. Fiscal year 22, we have budgeted $760,000 and change. That is a 15.42% increase. So the obvious trend is there. We went from 3.7 to 9.7, 15.4. And one would hope that this is not a trend, but there are forces working on driving this number. The whole budget increase, talking about the total budget of school and municipal side, increased in this budget $2,466,000 and so on and change. This year's increase in the pension plan is 30%, 30.8% of that whole total increase. So what's going to happen here, and has happened in the last three years, is the percentage of the budget that has been increased, the percentage of the budget increase, the revenue increase, is being claimed larger and larger size amounts of the pension plan. This trend continues, the pension costs have cut up. We'll eat up all of the annual increase in tax revenues. I think everybody can figure out what that means. Now, we all know that this is going on in other communities, so we'll leave a review of that, but I mean, more and more things. We are losing ground. Percentage of the pension obligations funded is declining, as I said. And fiscal year 18, the net assessed value of the total liability, sorry, total liability of the fund itself, in other words, all the money that is expected to be paid out for the life of the pension plan was $98 million. And that was then, this is fiscal year 18, funded at 57.8%. Following year fiscal 19, the total liability increased to $103,976,616, which is 15, 55%, 5.1%. And in the last year that we had won in 2020, it was the total liability had increased. it was the total liability had increased to $112 million, 186,000 change. Again, it dropped, the percentage funded, to 49.22%. Those are a lot of numbers, of course, and this is an argument of numbers, and so I apologize for all the numbers. But that's what's going on. Those numbers tell us the direction in which the pension plan is going. The last four years, the predicted date on which we will reach the state mandated minimum of 60% funding for our pension plan has proceeded by seven years. Now, most people don't know this, but every year we have a report from the SEAL company that does a calculation and predicts out, the outlook is what is necessary to pay and the cost of the program. Again, we're only talking about the pension plan. We're not talking about the 401K plan. We're not talking about what's called the MERS plan managed by the state. Those are other pension options. So in any case, in that same timeframe, this last, the last four years, the year of the SEAL recommendation, recommended contribution has increased 37%. So these numbers that we're talking about are starting to push us real hard in the budget. This data from the actuarial reports shows a pension system on the verge of going out of control, in our judgments. There are three potential reasons for this, and maybe one on the number. And this is a difficult topic, so we're not sure of the combination. Those reasons are asset managers clinically underfunding, underperforming, and providing subpar results in the investment fund that supports pension plan. When we say it's 49%, $112 million, that's the size of the pension investment. Our pension liabilities are increasing because we are adding people. These are options, not necessarily them. You're adding people to the pension system. We are increasing benefits for people in the system. Or our original actuarial assumptions were an error. Get the mission here. Actuarial people, companies, take a look at who's employed by the town and who's retired on the town pension plan and predicts what demands that will make on pension plan. So that, we're not talking about healthcare, and that's a different point. But otherwise, they are funded through the pension plan. Fund results are being smoothed by the actuarial company SEAL, which has masked their performance for five years, and this is just now catching up, which is one of the reasons we believe that the costs are rising and funding levels are falling. The stated balance in the pension fund was about $5 million higher in the SEAL report for the current fiscal year, to support the current budget year 22. It is, in reality, as audited, 55%. In the SEAL report, the assumption going into the data calculation is 60%. Now, this is all perfectly legal and was executed thoroughly in terms of the formulas and all to check this. So we're not saying that anything is being done incorrectly. Problem is, well, members of council and the citizens of the town who sit and look at these things, who don't get the SEAL report, it's hard to figure out this stuff. It's not tracking for best part of why. So understand that this is a problem, both mathematically and in terms of transparency. How is the, you know, this is, this is the basic approach that we have taken and looking at this. Now, part of our problem in calculating this, and for that matter, the council's problem for evaluating, and I should also point out, the school committee, some of your employees are in this pension plan, and so is your problem as well, is that it's difficult to figure out, yeah, say, at least. And, you know, it is, it just takes a long time to wind your way through all the budget material and find all those things. So, but the real problem in calculating this is we're always a year behind. Here we are, council sitting here, school committee previous to them, trying to make funding decisions based on actuarial estimations and audits of a year, basically a year old. You start the process, they're about nine months. So you're out of date. So nobody knows, we don't know, in all of this discussion, but the current market value of the pension plan is. So I would like to ask that question. What is the direct market value of the pension plan for May 30th of this year? Or I'll take April 30th, April 30th. Up last, previous block, so 69 million, 69 million checks, thank you.
And based on $112 million actuarial liability, puts this at 61%. Right, okay.
That's good. We all understand. However, we're starting to pour tremendous amounts of money into this. And that's the real problem. State may be acting out, 61%. But, you know, another year, it won't be able to spend money on anything but pensions. So that's the bottom line, and we're delivering. We know that the pension committee, the investment committee is not ones. They appear to be concerned about foreigners, the fund, the investment fund manager, think that's a problem. But there are other areas in which council must manage this thing and make sure that it's a good time. Any questions?
I'll just make the comment of being on the pension committee, we have looked at and we've gone up to RFP for a potential fund. There has been one person added to the pension program over the past four years. And everyone else has either been on the 401A or on the pension plan. Or as we've moved into RFP. If you look at the chart on age 107, you'll see the decline from the past few years, where we've gone from 153 people in the pension program down to 121. And I would like to believe that a lot of the issues are the actuarial assumptions are that hopefully people are living. And if that's the reason, that are one of the reasons that our pension liability is getting bigger, I think that's it.
We'll ask more details in a minute. Numbers of people in the defined benefit program, which is the pension plan you're talking about, is expected to decline as we weren't supposed to be getting, we weren't supposed to be adding to this thing. I remember back, I'm sure Mr. Hamilton did this as well. That was a decision made by the council, not adding employees to the pension plan. Therefore, we'd be able to manage it. However, while the employees of recovery rights program may be declining, costs keep going up still. It's about a regular time, spending is losing. So I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice. Tom, Tom Greve, 110 Tera Drive, enforcement. I thought since Mr. Fitzmaurice started with pension, and I have pension comments that I would continue on right now rather than wait. I initially found it impossible to reproduce the calculations for what I intuitively knew were wrong pension contribution amounts produced by the actuarial for the budget. After many trial calculations and lengthy research, it turned out that the smoothing calculations I had referred to were not the culprit. The problem was that the actuaries had used the wrong investment return rate. The town's most recent comprehensive annual financial report, which was distributed after the actuarial report, confirms on page 95 that the discount rate used by Corson's pension calculations was 6.75%. Quite frankly, that's a very reasonable number. The actuarial, however, used the rate of 6.4%. The only indication of this is a single sentence in paragraph 10 on page 6 of the actuarial report. Using that lower but incorrect rate finally allows me to reproduce the contribution number the actuarial had calculated. That proved the 6.4% rate had been used by the actuary as stated in the report. A change in the expected investment return rate for our pension assets is a policy decision for the council to make by a vote in public, most logically after they get advice from the town's pension investment committee. It is far, it is a far-reaching decision, not one to be made out of the public view by an actuary, never publicly discussed or disclosed. There is no mention in the past council minutes that the council even considered a change to the rate they started in 2012, much less instituted a new one. The actuary report I spoke about was neither discussed with the council nor provided to them correspondence. Due to the use of this lower, but not council-approved rate of return, the actuarially determined pension contribution in this budget is substantially higher than actually. The error results in inflating the pension contribution by number by over $200,000. Because the town funded pensions through 2040, that unnecessary increase is in each succeeding year's contribution for the next 18 years. Obviously, this error needs to be corrected before the budget can be approved. The correct actuarially determined contribution and each department's contribution derived from it needs to be recalculated using the proper rate of return of 6.75%. If you do not understand what I've said, please ask. This is a major mistake in the rate of return that was used, and it needs to be corrected so the residents are not overtaxed for the pension. Understood? Is it going to be changed?
So, when we just, Mr. Fitzmaurice was just explaining that we're, he'd like to see that number grow when it comes to our contributions since the thing on the long-term will want to be liability. So when you're talking about now increasing the rate back up, lowering the liability, that means we're lowering our contribution this year. So you're both speaking at different times.
No, you're absolutely right. We're on different sides of this subject. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you're answering the right question.
I might not be answering the question, but we do have two people on opposite side. Whether it be Mr. Fitzmaurice, logic, he wants to fund. You better want to fund the entire number, so your liability in the future is covered. So what you'd like us to do is actually decrease it and decrease, decrease, decreases our long-term coverage.
And we're not, you know, assuming the 6.75% is a reasonable number, which the council approved and is not unapproved, important point. Assuming that's a reasonable number, that number can be used and come up with the correct actuarially determined contribution. The thing that I would say is, yes, we would like it to go up. I don't want to put that effort on the taxpayer. I would much rather get an advisor for the pension fund that was meeting the goals that we set, which quite frankly, in the last decade, should have been easy to do. That's where I think the concentration needs to be, is on finding someone who can do that properly as opposed to let's put more on the taxpayer. And by the way, you're putting it on the taxpayer in a very untransparent way.
Thanks, I have a comment. I anticipated with bringing up pension discussion based on the email. But I didn't want to surprise you. Not, well, the surprise is, is your last quarter's funds was that we were underfunding it by $552,000. Now you're saying we're overfunding it by $2,000.
Okay, we can, we can, we can get into that.
Honestly, I agree. I mean, not sure. And I'm a little confused here because we have both members of PCC here. And Mr. Fitzmaurice is saying.
DCC has Democrats, it has Republicans, it's got.
No, no, no.
We don't all, we don't all agree all the time, just like the council.
I, my point is, is that there is, as Mr. Fitzmaurice brought up, there's a, there's the concern of pension funding underfunded. Now, you're pointing out that they were overfunding it. Just a few weeks ago, you were very prepared to play your spreadsheet saying that we were underfunding it to the $550,000.
Let, let, let me, let me, no, you brought it up, let me please address that. Can page 46 of the provisionally approved budget be put off?
Page 46.
One second. While I'm, while I'm doing this, I will tell you that the nomenclature used in the budget is almost designed to confuse the reader. For instance, the administration and the finance department have one pension number. All the rest of town hall, they have a pension 401. The police, fire, EPW have a pension 401 and a defined benefit. The defined benefit for the town hall is hidden, I'll say that. In the HR operations lines, not the benefit lines, the HR operations line on this page, the, the reason I was saying that, Mr. Iger, is if you look on that page, you will see that while budgeted, there is nothing in the actuals showing that the actuals either were not paid, no expenses there, or what you have here is wrong. I don't know which it is. That's the reason I was saying, it was because the budget that this town produced was confusing to someone, quite frankly, that's got an MBA. And to, to what Mr. Hamilton said, this is no longer about overfunding, underfunding. We're at the right level. 61%, whatever it is, that's fine. So let's not overtax the people by reducing, in an inappropriate way, the council wasn't involved, the rate. And I'd like to see that changed to be about 200, my calculation is $211,400 that would be given back to the taxpayers. And you could brag about an even better tax rate. Thank you. It was, I'm sorry. Is this one considered for a change? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was accused, accused, it was mentioned that I was trying to raise money that was spending on pension. I don't think I actually said that, but that was the impression that, yeah, that's not the case. What I would like to see is that if you manage it, they're a lot better than this. And, you know, this is a complicated, uh, process. We don't have access to some of the assets that are available to the town. DCC's may have a lot of people, but we don't have a lot of people to understand the pension plans. So, um, the way the budget is written took us about three weeks to find all of the entries for the budget. I mean, the pension in the budget. Finally got it balanced. Took a long time. And, you know, and that's, and that's two people, three people know what they're doing and what they're doing. We believe very strongly that there should be a budget summary page, sorry, a pension summary page somewhere in this budget. Says this is your cost, something similar to what we have had to do in order to understand the problem. As I said earlier, this is the fast road to financial difficulties in town. And it has, it has been the downfall of many communities in the state, I would say many, a number. It's a number. So it is imperative, I believe, of council to ensure, you know, when someone who is concerned about whether we're funding this thing properly. Maybe I would go to a page, look at it and say, okay, that's the numbers. That's the history of it. It looks like it's being well managed. That's the whole purpose of this budget and that's the whole purpose of this meeting.
And this is a public hearing, so we didn't take your comments.
Uh, Lawrence Sylvia, twenty-four, Old Millane. This September will make eighty years on the street, so I think I'm a local. Uh, I listened to the whole budget and I noticed there was no provision for the Portsmouth Senior Center, which to me has been very confusing. We had a station fire. In the station fire, they had pyrotechnics, which we don't have at the senior center. All of a sudden, everybody has to, you know, I would think it would be grand time to do it. The building's been there a long time. It's had a single use. Uh, and I don't see why you can't take care of the seniors. We obviously take care of the children very well. I saw the budget. We take care of the fire department. We take care of the police department, new buildings. What happened to the Portsmouth seniors? You've got to take care of your parents. That's all there is to it. And I didn't hear anything about it in the budget. And I think it should be there.
My name is Elaine Majeris, I live twenty-five, Miss Terrace, in Portsmouth. I understand that rent money for this community twenty-two is not being spent for the senior center. It's being taken back. Will the programs, the lunch programs, all of the other programs that assist the elderly, their taxes, and health insurance, all of these programs, are they under, are they covered with rent money is pulled back?
I think you're referring to the federal American Rescue Plan money. That, the directions for that money are still coming. One, we haven't received any money. Two, we're still waiting, uh, the allowable uses of that money from the Department of Treasury. Right now, there's essentially only a few uses that are allowed for that. Broadband, uh, water, sewer. We're working with our federal delegation, our state delegation to get those allowable uses expanded. It will be up to the council. None of that money has been spoken for. There have been ideas for that money. But if we get all the money that we anticipate will be millions of dollars, um, that will have to be used at some point on some projects. With regard to grant programs, uh, I don't know of any cuts in any lunch programs or anything that we discussed. Uh, with regard to the senior center, uh, there are a number of things that we're waiting for. Um, obviously, most of you, I think, are aware of, uh, the work that's, uh, for the proposal that uh, we're anticipating from church community houses. Church community housing, uh, will come to the town and present a proposal for a brand new senior center, the senior center house. Uh, we're waiting for an engineering and architectural review of the Ann Hutchinson Building. We're getting very, people are arguing about the numbers in the Jacob's U. So we hired another firm to take a look at the building to give us true numbers for the, uh, what it would cost the town to renovate the Ann Hutchinson Building. And then three, uh, we've started a master plan for open space and recreation. In that R B, they will also discuss, uh, uses for the buildings in town. I'm sure the senior center, uh, slant possible future community center will be discussing that. So nobody's forgotten, uh, the seniors. Uh, if anything, we're doing everything we can to make sure that this is viable. Uh, with respect to money from the senior center, it's listed in civic support and every dollar that the senior center has asked for has been budgeted in civic support.
Uh, Mrs. Harris, before you leave, what specific grants are you talking about? Is there state-level grants that you've heard of that aren't coming through in terms of?
Specific grant was not specified, so.
Well, you, you've got our email address. So if you, if you hear of a specific grant specifically that's from the state level in terms of, um, lunch program, right, and that, please let us know. Obviously, we don't have the full state budget, but we can, about on page, you can clear.
Thank you.
Nancy, you've been one tenth there, drive. On April twenty-seventh, I questioned the inconsistencies on page twenty, uh, seventy-nine of this budget, which turned out to be accounting errors. My microphone was turned off before it was able to continue. Correcting the accounting errors on seventy-nine did not connect, correct these errors on another page. Had it not been cut off, I would have pointed out the same errors on the summary page thirty-four. These errors are still in the documented budget tonight on page thirty-four. If the administrator had used a spreadsheet program instead of cutting and pasting, the page thirty-four errors would have self-corrected. My second point is, I have a serious problem with the entire concept of civic support. From my observation over the years, most counselors use this as an exchange of our taxpayer money for feel-good votes. The library and the senior center should not be funded under civic support. These are essential organizations and should have their own page and be entirely funded by the town. AI can see is a private do-nothing organization that fails that well, everything. No public donations, six executive directors in eight years, has not completed any project that benefits the residents of Portsmouth since before two thousand and twelve. It's spent over a million dollars of federal tax dollars on two VMPs on the island when their signed agreement states that they would complete six to ten with this money. AIPC is also borrowing money from the prevalent infrastructure ban. Why? Any nonprofit that borrows money is not receiving grants, not receiving donations, and not able to pay their bills. Again, exactly why are we giving our money to this organization? Even Clean Ocean Access and Eastern Ireland Conservation Organizations should never be funded by civic support. Money for votes again. I believe in the work and approve the open finances of Clean Ocean Access, but I donate my own money. I do not believe that the public funds should just be given away. Over the last two years, Linda Eusufia has lobbying entertained twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Common Fence Point Community Center. Why? I have my own thoughts on this, but for tonight, money for votes will do. This is basically a private homeowners association. Now, the same organization is charging our seniors twenty-five dollars an hour to use their center for classes as well as dictating the instructives that cannot be used. From my accounting, the twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars should have entitled the town to one thousand and thirty-three free hours at the center. Yet the center is again receiving taxpayer money by renting space to our seniors, not very civic-minded of Common Fence Point or Linda Eusufia. The money's given to these non-town organizations over the last few years amounts to well over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money. Yet this council and the two previous councils cannot find the money to install sprinklers in our own senior center. Again, why? All schools in Portsmouth meet or exceed fire codes. Of course they do and should. Why is this council not protecting our seniors by installing the needed sprinkler system? As a taxpayer, I'm appalled at the treatment of our seniors, especially when you compare this to the do-nothing AI can see organization. What makes this more deplorable is the huge surplus on both the school and the town budget. Saying that the town does not have the money is just not correct. This failure is a choice by our council. After allocating monies to cover union contracts, every penny spent in the budget is a choice by the council. This council has made the choice to bail our seniors again in this fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. I implore all residents here tonight and on the, the Zoom to come up and demand that the council both rethink the entire civic support concept, concept, and demand our money be allocated to install sprinklers in the Ann Hutchinson building so that it can be used for the next three years until this dream M O U comes to fruition. Thank you.
I've just, just a couple of comments. First off, uh, this, this is not a climate-based document. This document is derived from the extensive database in itself, uh, workbook. I'm looking at page thirty-four, civic support, and I'm also, which is the summary. And I'm looking at page seventy-nine. I, I don't see any differences in the totals. I'd be happy to make any corrections if there are corrections necessary.
The corrections you made after April twenty-seventh are correct on seventy-nine. But look at the same columns that you corrected on seventy-nine on thirty-four, and what was handed to me tonight is still wrong.
So please pull up page thirty-four. And as you're looking at page thirty-four, I'll read those column numbers from page seventy-one. Starting at total civic support for fiscal years two thousand and nineteen, eight oh seven zero eight five. I'm sorry, page, yeah, page thirty-four should be civic support.
It's, it's page forty of the T D Fs, it's page thirty-four in the annual. That does get confusing, especially.
But we can go by either one. We can go by the cell. So I'll just go by the total civic support. Total civic support for that year, I'll read from page seventy-nine, page thirty-four is up there, just to lay a concern.
It's not the totals that you've changed. It's, um, on the, uh, the lines that, uh, started the approved fiscal year twenty twenty. Look at the, uh, the prevention coalition. The thirty-one, six ninety-six in twenty twenty, the actual you've given to the Portsmouth senior bus.
Thank you very much. Uh, that actually should be myself then.
And then you'll, you'll see the same thing on, uh, the Common Fence Point. You gave them twenty-eight, twenty-five, but you're saying you're only, you only gave them five, two oh six.
That's, uh, that's another excellent point. Those two cells. Page thirty-four, those two numbers, the fifteen, six, one, nine, and the five, two, oh, six added together, do add the twenty-eight, twenty-five and make that correction. Thank you.
Elizabeth McIntyre, one thirty-two, Roger Williams, four. I, I would like to reiterate the basis point of my colleague who just spoke. And the point that really speaks to me and that I would like your answer for about is why is there not a section in the town budget devoted to the seniors of this town? It's quite extraordinary to me that we are spending the amount we do, and I happily support the schools, but the notion that we're spending millions of dollars, we're spending on that and virtually nothing on the seniors of the town who are helping support those schools is absurd to me. Why did we not have a separate section in the budget? And we have things that we want to do to assist a major portion of the population of this town. Why is that not a section of the budget? And will you change that in future budgets or in this budget?
Mr. President, there's nothing mysterious about it. The senior central organizations, an independent five oh one organization, I guess.
Sorry, you're missing my point. You are missing my point. I am not making a point just about the senior center. I care about that, yes, but I'm making a more general point about the way the budget is constructed, which basically hides anything for seniors in this, in the civic, uh, area as opposed to an air, a section of the budget specifically for seniors. There should be a lot of things that this town does for the seniors of this town, and there's virtually none. That's, I'd like the council to speak to that issue.
Before, Mr. President, if I may, it's not arguable. I understand your point. I think it's a great point. The budget is for the whole town.
Yes, and there should be a section, there should be a section, just like there's a section for roads, just as for public works, just as like there's a section for schools, there should be a section for the seniors of this town. It would make all the difference.
You know, establish that you, you would be consider adding a department for senior services within the town administration, like within the town, having a specific department for senior services. I'm just, I'm asking you.
Right, I understand. I understand you're asking the question. I don't necessarily see this as a department. Um, I think if you were to, uh, solicit a focus group of seniors who put together a plan for the council to consider, um, you could maybe figure out what the best mechanism might be for administering this. But the basic notion that you have transparently and as a separate part of our budget, senior services, and maybe, yeah, maybe you do need to hire someone.
Well, I mean, I, so. I mean, we have, we have, currently have the, um, the nonprofit for the senior center. In addition to that, or do away with that and have a separate department?
Probably do away with that, but I'm speaking from a position of ignorance on that particular topic. So I'm not trying to, I can't push that. What I can push, though, and I really think you need to think about seriously, we've got a lot of people here on a very hot Wednesday night, and virtually all of them are people my age or a little younger or a little older. And they're all here because they feel like no one in this council is paying attention to the fact that we are important parts of this town. And we contribute a great deal to this town, and we are getting nothing. To react to this, all we get is, oh, yes, well, there's this and there's that and this, the other thing that we hope might happen. But that's the problem. And maybe, as you speak, maybe we need a department.
We just, it's a public hearing. We're just having this discussion.
Right, I know. But it's upsetting that we, I mean, it's exactly, we're here on a budget hearing, and there is no separate way for you to assess how little you're doing. But you're doing almost nothing and virtually nothing.
And I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate everyone that's coming out.
Is there anyone here that agrees with my point?
I think everyone. So what I'm trying to look at is moving forward. And again, as you stated, it might not happen in this specific budget cycle because we're in the middle of June, in the budget cycle by July one. But moving forward, is this an opportunity for us to, as a council, to make that? We can't create an apartment on a whim. We would have to take that into consideration and evaluate it because we are also funding through civic support the operations at the senior center, which, now, I know, I mean, you can you can have your opinion about the services provided at the senior center. But what we hear from the folks at the senior center is that they're requesting money to provide essential services.
They are essential services. I agree with it.
So what we need to decide is, what is the best course? Whether it is to take that funding and divert it? I don't have the answer tonight.
I do have a suggestion for the short term, and that is that, and this is really simply reordering rubrics in the list of your budget. If you, without creating a department, if you were to create a separate line item or a separate section item for senior services, and then you were to list under that the couple of things that are actually relevant to that right now in your budget, in your current budget. You're basically just reshuffling the deck, but it makes it transparent to you and to us what exactly is currently being funded. And then we can, in the future, look at, okay, how do we fix this? But changing the heading is not a big task. It's something you could do before the twenty-eighth of June.
Well, my point would be the services that are provided by the senior center were provided to us in the list of services under civic support, so.
Yes, I'm saying, I'm saying move that, move those items under a new heading for seniors. And also the nonprofit you mentioned, put that under there too. And basically, you're just shuffling the deck, but you're making it transparent what you think right now you're providing to seniors. That doesn't require any sort of reorganization of the government. It just requires transparency.
Well, we don't have control over what the services that are provided by the senior center as a group that we fund, but we don't dictate how they use that money.
I understand that, but what little you do provide is for the seniors of the town and therefore could be put under that rubric. I'm not asking you to get a laundry list of all the specifics of it. I'm just saying, it's a way to start the process so that we have a new line item that we can all look at, and then we can say, well, what should be included? Is it this or is it that? And that's my suggestion.
I absolutely hear what you're saying. And that request, that Oliver request comes to us from that nonprofit group. You're asking us to just take it and put it in a separate place on the budget?
Yes.
Take it out of civic support, which says Portsmouth Senior Center?
Exactly, yes, exactly what I'm saying. Because then you, basically, just like you have a school section of your budget, I'm asking you to create a senior section of your budget and what there is to put, which is not much, into that section. And now, going forward, we can work on that.
Fair enough. I think we can do that.
One of my days, I live at Winkie Free Dump Street. I've been here for twenty-one years. My kids came up from the schools. I have kind of, I want to get this from a different point of view. I am sixty-four years old. I am a baby boomer. Baby boomer. There's lots of us. And we're going to need services. You're going to have to take us into consideration. You're going to have to take us into consideration, what our needs are. So, you know, maybe some renovations in senior centers, not quite. Because there are going to be lots of us who need the services at some place like the senior center. We need to keep active. You know, I just retired, and I'm like, what the heck can I do? Where can I go? What's out there for me as an older individual for me to do? You know, where can I meet other people, these other people of my generation who are out there and retired and worked, you know, thirty years? And now we're home. What's there for us? Can we go to Wal-Mart? Maybe teaching math today? You know, where can I walk? Where can I do things to keep me active? I do have something on my calendar that's coming up at the senior center. I'll be there probably doing some dancing or something. You know, so you have to expand your view, saying there's more people that are going to be needing our services, and what are the age-appropriate services that we as a town need to provide these people? Because they've been contributing their share, and now it's time for them to, maybe, then, besides the schools.
My name is Clarence Peltz. G E O W S T A Y. I live at three-one-seven Vanderbilt Lane. I've lived in Portsmouth for twenty years. The last time I came to a town council meeting, the majority of the town council people wore red shirts. I don't know if people remember that. I remember that. The other people with red shirts were school teachers. And when I tried to get up and make a comment about senior citizens of the town council, you know, senior citizens are break on whole state taxes. We live on social security. Town council increases our real estate taxes. Why the hell should I stay in Portsmouth? I should go to Florida. I lose that. But listening to all these people talking about the senior citizens, the BS coming from the town council, a signing of agreement with some church group to quit low-income housing, and you people sit there up and say, no, we can't tell you what's going on. We don't want to tell the senior citizens. In that building, that we may tear the damn building down and put low-income housing. That's what we hear. Rumors that senior citizens and you people at town council will not tell us what the hell's going on. Why? It's all, I say, follow the money. Follow the votes. I've been watching this town council play games with old people. Where votes, like that one woman says, you guys make decisions by gaming votes. Well, I think it's time to change the town council.
Come on up, Mr. Fitzmorris.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Mr. President, some comments about taxes. Specifically, the surpluses generated on the town and the school side of budgets has dropped in the last few years. Princeton, of course, always liked to have a surplus. There were days in our town when we had deficits at our back. So it's not a criticism of the fact we've been managing the budget, especially the school part, we're bringing forth a surplus. Or is it so much a criticism of the town as well? However, it's still a surplus, it's all concerned. You add the surpluses over the last two years together. Sorry, last two audit years together, which is twenty-nineteen, fiscal year twenty-nineteen, fiscal year twenty-twenty. School surplus for two years is one-point-two million. Town surplus for the same two years was six million. Red at the other, it was two-point-eight million. And we submit that as excessive. And in fact, there's over tax-free citizens. That was leaving both school environment in general and the town are fairly well-managed. I don't think it's not, but happy that we didn't squirrel money away somewhere. All this, of course, goes into the fund balance, which is supposed to. But we would suggest to the council that under the circumstances, especially the fact that we've gone through this plague and financial damage in the town, still not wide yet, I still believe, there's going to be a lot of damage when subsidies are hanging in small businesses. So it's a lot of people involved in that, just not business owners. So I would like respectfully to point out that the number shouldn't be in two years, two-point-eight-million-dollar surplus. We need to fund many, many things, including the fund balance, but we expect that to be better managed, so the number isn't so large. I'm not talking about something that is an occasional surplus. We're talking about pretty regular business in the school department. So not less regular, but certainly a significant process all the time, so. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmorris.
Tom Greve, one ten, Sarah Dry. I'm going to take a page from my wife's book about three years ago when she showed somebody else out of buying money in the budget. I just showed you the funding pension by two-hundred-thousand dollars this year. Nobody disagreed with that. Didn't seem to want to grant about it. My guess is you don't want to use taxes. So why don't you use that extra money you have with sprinklers?
Mr. Greve, I appreciate the recommendation there. We, as Mr. Rayner has stated, are conducting an evaluation of the building now to try to get some costs. Because, and you pointed it out, you're not sure about what's going on with the senior center. We're evaluating some options at the senior center. The church community housing proposal is to also renovate and provide a brand-new senior center. Right? It's, they are reviewing feasibility. So there's an option on the table. And a new facility would also include some senior housing. For the senior housing, senior housing for that project. It's not a done deal. It's something that's being evaluated. If that doesn't, if that doesn't come to fruition, we're still getting numbers to understand what the costs are to renovate that building. Because there is this, there's this misconception that it's only going to take two-hundred or three-hundred-thousand dollars to put sprinklers in that building, and everybody's going to be able to reuse that building. That's not the case, because there's significant upgrades that may also be required. They could have significant costs, and we're not talking about two or three-hundred-thousand dollars. It could be in millions. So before we can just commit to something, we're trying to get those numbers. And I think we have stated that in the past. The town administrator has provided that update. We are doing our part. We have a citizen, there are three citizens that are part of this committee that are, they're seniors. They're involved with the process. So we're not doing this behind closed doors. There are meetings. These folks are engaged in the meetings. I've attended. I have missed the last two meetings, but we do have representation. Councilman, the neighborhood president is on that committee as well. So we are, we are looking into options to see what can be done at the senior center. You want us to try to allocate this two-hundred-thousand towards it? Maybe that's an option. We'll take that into consideration. Absolutely. But please don't think that just putting sprinklers in the building is going to allow everyone to just go back and reuse that building. I do not want you to believe that, because there's other upgrades that may be also required for that facility, which are far going to be, far exceed two-hundred-thousand dollars.
I know that you are correct at that. You also did not attend a meeting that the fire marshal gave at the senior center, where he said the only thing keeping that from being a place of assembly right now and for the next three years, which is all I'm talking about, is the sprinkler system. He said the doorway problem. There are plenty of doors. The system needs that as the main entrance. There are other ways around the other problems. He said that they would open the building up for assembly if the sprinkler system was put in. And I'm only talking about three years. It's going to take three years for church community housing to put together their plan and bring it to, and get it approved and all of that. In those three years, the seniors do not have a place. So for three to four-hundred-thousand dollars, we can give them a place for the next three, four years, and it may turn into something else, or it may not. But the point is, you've got money. You obviously don't want to give it up. You've got it in a place that doesn't need it. Mr. Hamilton showed us.
Mr. Hamilton showed us that we're out of critical, we're above the 60%. Let's use the money that we're collecting, quite frankly, inappropriately for pensions in a more effective way to help it through. It's just a thought. And I, you notice I don't have it, I don't have the piece of paper, I just thought of it. But I really think that it's a way in which you could address the problem with money that's not going to hurt the town in any other way. Not taking from Peter, they call. The pension is solid, from what I hear.
Again, we appreciate your comment and we can take it in our five minutes and make a decision. I don't have a ask police service to look into this, but that is the, the number that's in our budget is what our actuary told us was our part. That's what's been reported to the state, that's what we're bringing to our budget. We may not be able to pull that coming out.
You may or may not, but if it was a mistake, it should be able to be fixed. The budget is not yet, the budget is not approved yet. Yeah. The actuary used the wrong number, period. I don't know whether you people knew that ahead of time and said, well, we're not going to tell anybody. We, you just but if you did, who's looking at the budget? I found it.
Thank you for finding it. We're going to run that to ground, but also sprinklers throughout that same Gaskill report and in the actuary review report, the number 6.75 is used, so we appreciate it. We're going to run it to ground. And it deserves a response.
The number 6.75 is not used in the CEAL report at all. The only place that CEAL has 6.75 in the CEAL report is when, where it says on paragraph 10, age six, the return was lowered from 6.75 to 6.4.
And we'll look at that. And I was reviewing the report today and I could show you where it says 6.75. So obviously there was something that happened with the actuary. We're going to run it to ground. And as I said, so where can CEAL report that says 6.75? Okay, while you guys talk about something else.
Okay. I look at those backwards and forwards and that's the only place I could find.
Turn to page 111 of the budget, please. Look at the section called actuarial assumptions. The investment rate return 6.75%. The discount rate 6.75%. The wage inflation rate 2.75%. That's where we drew the number from. So I, again, I would look to see what happened.
You got the CEAL report there, I see. Can you just double check that I signed?
This isn't the whole CEAL report, this is the schedule of contributions for the last seven fiscal years. And you also note
Oh, okay, for the last seven fiscal years, it's actually correct. It was changed to this budget. This is the first budget you're going to use, 6.44.
But in the notes to the schedule, that's what I'm saying, in the notes to the schedule, they're saying that the investment rate return is 6.75%. Those are the notes to the schedule. So we'll, again, we will take a look at this. I mean, this absolutely deserves an answer.
Thank you, that's the first time I've heard that.
Nancy Howard, 16th Avenue, Avenue 9th, Mr. Agneward, you're not allowing the public to come to those focus group meetings. Those are committee meetings that are not scheduled and the public is not allowed to attend. We don't ever speak a minute, so we have no idea what is going on with the senior center for this. I filed a complaint with the attorney general, you're aware of that. You appointed members and you are not allowing us to pay attention, to know what's going on, to get the minutes, to attend the meetings, to bring our interests up.
I hear what you're saying. We did three citizens.
Okay, the rest of us don't know what's going on. None of us know. It's all secret, exactly what, exactly what the other guy said, it's all being secret. No, no one's talking, she's saying.
Mr. President, this is a public town, public meeting. The town administrator is not speaking.
Thank you, Mr. President. As correctly stated, this is a working group that is working with an outside organization advising them for a proposal that they're going to bring to the town. This is not a town committee working on a, like, town project. This is a working group.
It's town property.
It's, they're going to bring a proposal. There are developers outside, right now, working on proposals for town property. It happens all the time.
It's a town, a group.
And with all due respect, the attorney general will run their opinion.
And so meantime, all the meetings will be kept secret from the members of the senior center.
Actually, the members of the senior, the directors on it, the board of directors, members of the
No one's getting any information.
Well, have you asked the senior center folks what's going on?
I don't think they're getting minutes, are they getting minutes of the meeting?
They're attending the meetings, they're involved with the meetings. The director of the enforcement senior center is involved with the meetings.
Okay, so she's the one who's sharing this information.
With the senior center? I mean, if the seniors and the members, there are members who are active members of the senior citizen population that go to the senior center, they're involved in what's going on and letting us know.
I disagree.
Okay, okay. It's a called a comment, you're allowed to disagree, we can agree to disagree.
Cynthia Kineke, Director of the Focus Group, Senior Center, 45th Avenue, 20th Street. I just wonder, you know, we do not get any phone, the focus group. It's just a group there and we just discuss things, nothing that is going yet. The architects and surveyors, I'm not even, I'm not trying to say anything bad about the senior. I want the senior center, I don't know why you're worried, how, you know, but it is what it is now. But I just want to say it is just a group that gets together and discusses things. And if I was, we go back and having a members meeting every month and just having three times a year, we know what's going on, but you need to show up and remember to know what's going on. I do appreciate you all being here today. I, if you look around, that's how important the senior center is, it's here, the seniors. So, you know, in all fairness to the focus group, yes, I understand that they want minutes, but we don't, it's just a group of, and discuss things.
It was intended to be an ad hoc group because they, there was, the church community has a proposal, or they envision a proposal which would potentially renovate the senior center or build a new senior center, depending on if the building is structurally sound. They're doing an independent evaluation because it's an independent proposal that they would come to the town with. And we're also doing an independent study right now to get some costs because we need to understand what those numbers are in case the church community deal does not happen. We need to have a order of magnitude as to what these costs could be. So no decisions have been made. We will try to get additional clarification and we're not hiding anything. And the intent, and it's been loud and clear from those focus groups, that the seniors that are attending the focus group meeting, they want the, you can vouch for me here on this one, they want the building to stay. And so we're, we're looking at the opportunity to renovate that building. But renovating a 100-year-old building comes with challenges. And so if there's ways to improve that with either a new facility or they're going to identify what those limitations are within the existing facility. But we're not, there's been no attempt to eliminate the senior center completely. They're looking at ways to keep it right where it is and try to renovate the building if possible. If not, under their proposal, they'll come back with something new. But that's just one element. If that doesn't happen, we're also getting dollar, you know, costs to understand what those dollars are. And that's, that's all I can tell you. There's really nothing else that's going on. There's no secret plan to not get down and put up just housing. I mean, we are looking at options for a new senior center or a renovated senior center at that location. Is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement, but I just want to go back to that sprinkler system. By not having a sprinkler system now, our capacity is going to be reduced after July 1st to 33.
That was my understanding of it.
And what do you do with 33? We only can put eight people in a room. How do you do fundraising when you're taking our assembly away from us to do fundraising?
And we understand that. And that's why I don't want this to be a misunderstanding of if we just put sprinklers and we're going to be able to reopen the building completely. That is not an accurate statement. There are other code issues that might have to be addressed as well. And we're trying to identify what those are. And we may know more in a few weeks, which is, the report is probably a week or two later.
I thought most of the codes were
I don't, I
I thought it was just three that were
They might be built, so again, you're
I'm going by the fire marshal's report.
You can go back to the fire marshal's report, but that doesn't include what building code renovations make trigger once you make a certain amount of renovation. So we're all speaking out of turn until we get more information.
So we will get those codes.
We are waiting for that report to come in.
And when will that be?
We believe it might be within the next two weeks. Is that fair, Mr. Rayner?
Or maybe end of the month. There's a I communicated with them today, they're hoping to get the report to me Monday, so I can get on the next town council, then the, this will be the 28th.
Right, thank you very much.
As far as I know, there's nothing stopping you with our focus group from reporting out in your monthly, it's monthly senior center letter, or is it?
Um, newsletter, yes.
So you can report out, here's what's happening, here's where we are. Something's stopping you from putting that in seriously.
Right, when you have a meeting that's coming up June 28th at the senior center, so a members meeting, so if you attend, you'll get the news. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, man, you're going to have to come down. Or, or
It's open here, unfortunately, they have to come on. We can bring it to you.
What are we going to do if they eliminate the senior center? If church group decides to knock it down, make housing, what do we do? Are you going to put us in another building?
It's not
And if they decide to have housing and to do away with the center, that might take four or five years. You know what, I'll be dead by then.
Just, I miss your name.
My name is Irene Helmers and I live at 109 Henry Dennis Court.
Listen, Ms. Helmers, any decision that gets made about the senior center is going to come before the council in a public meeting. They have not even developed a plan yet. But I can assure you, there is, to come in and say we're just eliminating the senior center and putting up housing is not even something this council has
Even if they decide to make a new senior center, that's going to take a few years.
That's what we're trying to understand right now. That's the process we're going through in order to make decisions and move forward. We did get a positive result, we did get some, some positive feedback when the fire marshal allowed us to still utilize the building after July 1st under a limited capacity. It's no longer considered a place of assembly, which is what the school was considered a place of assembly. So it was reclassified, which does allow use of more of the facility, but it has to do it within the limited occupancy. There are no sprinklers. And I know there was comments earlier about can't be grandfathered in. No, because God forbid something happened in that facility and it catches fire. And then lives are lost. That's a, that's a huge ask that you're saying, just let us in there without sprinklers. Nobody could stand up and say, yes, we're going to do that.
If you, if you don't put sprinklers, and we have no place to go, you've got to put us in another building, do something for us.
We are working on that, I'm sure.
Okay. And if you, if they decide to make a new building, you know, that's going to cost more money, maybe, than to renovate and fix the old building because the supplies are very expensive. Materials are very expensive.
All very good points. And we can't make a decision because we don't have the information yet. But maybe by next Monday, we'll get a report. It will be presented at our next town council meeting where we'll get a report that says, from the independent consultant, that says they've renovated the building and they'll give us that information. We don't know what that, what the results of their study are. But that will be information that we are going to share. As we've stated numerous times, we will share that information also with the senior center because again, I don't want this misconception, if we just put sprinklers on, we can reopen the building. There might be other factors that prevent that from happening and we will know more once we get that information.
But it might not cost as much money to renovate the building as it would to build the new building from ground up. That's what I'm trying to say.
I hear what you're saying, but it also might cost more. We don't know. We just don't know at this point.
And another question, you're all going to be senior citizens, what are you going to do if you have no senior? Nobody sits home in the chair anymore. My grandparents did, but nobody does that anymore, everybody is busy.
Right, and I want you to stay, not stop moving.
No, I'm not, I just turned the 80, now I'm going to keep going as long as I can.
Now you're going to have to walk around with that. Come on down, it's open mic.
We're sticking 56 41th Street in Portland. You, you get it?
We got you.
Having lived here about 48 years now, I love this place, but I have to take issue when you say no decision has been made. The past several years, decisions have been made to let that building go, not to do any maintenance work.
Anyone else like to come down? Mr. Fitzmorris, you have something to do? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a quick thank you to Mr. Hamilton, who's initially brought this meeting together tonight, which time we've seen some of the members of the council in person sometime. And I know you guys don't join these things and operate on the citizens' part of the community. So it's, it's So do appreciate Mr. Hamilton's addition. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm up here. Appreciate your comments, thank you for coming out. It's hot, uncomfortable, but it's important and we appreciate all of your comments. Thank you. We have some, some stuff to move forward with here and make some decisions. Thank you again. We'll keep you posted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bottomiron?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Ivey?
Aye.